But I have to notify that tonight's meeting is being both video and audio taped, and I have to ask if anybody out there is doing the same out there in the neighborhood.
Yes, yep, thank you, sir.
Okay, comments and concerns? Anybody have any comments and concerns at this point? Mr. Carroll?
Can I just sit at this table for like a couple of minutes? Or stand up, whatever you want to do.
No, stand up right there, sir.
Okay. The reason I'm here at this Selectman meeting tonight, and the reason I'm running for Selectman on May 6th is because I'm trying to resuscitate our town of Warren. I can bear witness to the fact that it is, at its lowest point in the last 28 years that I have been a resident, and venture to say probably in its entire history, unless this town gets new leadership, it's doomed. It's at the point where people just want to sell their homes for whatever they can get and leave. The taxpayer pie is not being shared evenly, and there's a feeling of complete hopelessness. The town government as a whole cannot even get out of its own way to even accomplish the simplest of things. The only solution has been to keep raising taxes, spending everyone's hard-earned money, with only a dilapidated run downtown to show for it. Mr. Delansky, you have been a Selectman in this town?
Wait a minute. You can't give, it's a political speech. You can't give a political speech at a Selectman's meeting. We have to offer it. It's a political speech.
Mr. Delansky, I just want one minute to finish my thing.
Don't use any names. Don't use any names, all right?
Okay, this is on the record, these are their rules. I just wanted five minutes of comments and concerns, that's all I wanted.
That's what you're getting. Finish your thing, but without...
Basically, I'm asking Mr. Delansky to step aside, that's what I'm asking. Okay, that's what this town needs, for you to step aside, we got four people running for Selectman right now. Do the town a favor and step aside, please. Please.
All right, are you done? Are you done?
You make the rules, you tell me.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Anybody else have any comments and concerns?
Yes, hi. Good evening, gentlemen. Just wondering if you had had a chance to review any of the documentation?
The answer is no.
Okay.
And we won't be talking to it in this meeting in the future. I told you that before, all right?
Yeah, okay.
So don't ask us again, please.
Okay.
All right? We'll answer any inquiries you have, but it'll be by mail.
Okay.
All right?
And that was just regarding the stack of paperwork I gave you from the last meeting, is what I was referring to.
Well, it's all redundant to us. You just keep going over the same thing and the same thing over and over again.
And then the only other...
And I told you, unless you come up with something new, we're not talking to it, all right?
Okay. And the only other thing I have to ask is, is there anything new we got in the open room in Washington Place? Because you had mentioned that with those signature cards...
There is none.
Okay.
The moment we have something new, we'll notify you, all right?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any other comments and concerns? Okay, let's proceed with the correspondence.
Correspondence, correspondence tonight is strictly informational. You get notice in the Warren Police Department that David Goldberg intended his resignation on his position for kickback. He is appreciative of the opportunity he deserves to serve the town and will stay in touch. They have correspondence from Don Dickerson, Chairman of the Warren Casino Study Committee. The committee members feel they have completed the task they were entrusted with. And although the voters did not approve the proposed casino in Palmer, the committee, through its many efforts, was able to secure the designation of surrounding immunity for the town of Warren, which would be beneficial should another casino proposal come forward in the future. The chairman wishes to thank the Select Board for their support for years, as well as those dedicated members that have worked on the committee over the past few years.
Could we send a letter to each member of the Casino Study Committee thanking them for their effort and work? And could we then, I would move that we disband the Casino Study Committee.
I will second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's it?
Did you, were you interested in saying that you're sending a thank you to Mr. Goldberg?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a hearing at 7:15. We're early, we're running a little bit early, so the mutual aid agreement that we have, that's old business.
Can we table that to the next meeting? Chief Maripaski wasn't able to make it this evening.
We can, okay. Table that to the next meeting. All right, the Hampshire Council of Governments, there's a letter here with a contract for signing for electricity discussion. Have anybody read that? Are you prepared to talk to that, or...
I went through it and looked, and I think it's good until December of 2015, if I'm not mistaken. And it cuts the electrical charges, well, not the charges, the actual rate in half. So I would have no problem with it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to sign that.
So moved.
Second.
Second, I have a motion, a second, to sign an electrical contract fixing the rate, I think it's a... Is it the present rate we're paying, I think, right?
No, we actually are cutting it from, if I remember, like 18 cents to nine cents, something like that.
To nine cents, all right, yes. Well, it's the best bargain we've had offered, so, all right. End discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's sign that. Okay. Treasury warrants, Mr. Levasse, let's do the...
Make a motion, we accept warrant number 89, which is payroll, amount of $33,505.9.
Second.
Motion second, end discussion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we accept warrant number 90, for vendors, amount of $189,014.46.
Second.
Motion second, end discussion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we accept warrant number 91, which is payroll, for the amount of
Second.
Motion second, end discussion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we accept warrant number 92, for vendors, for amount of $145,602.35.
Second.
Motion second, end discussion. Hearing none? All in favor? All right. Let's do the minutes, Mr. Levasse.
Motion, we accept the minutes of February 25th, as written.
Second.
Okay, motion second. End discussion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is that the only one we have tonight?
Uh huh. Yes, the only one is it.
We still got a few minutes. Are you, Mr. Mailand?
I am.
You are, back there, all right.
Yeah.
Would you like to come up and set up this table? We're five minutes early, but why don't you come up here?
I'll take a few minutes.
All right. Sit right over there, so...
Thank you.
It's a hearing, and it's supposed to be for a certain time, all right, Mr.? So I'd like for you to sit right there just for a few minutes.
Oh, this is a hearing?
No, it's not a hearing. It's just a discussion.
Well, just a discussion.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
But I mean, we're set, we have you up for 7:15 to hear.
7:15, that's right.
Okay. Were you getting worried?
I was like, wait a second, public hearing? I'm not ready for that.
Sorry, sorry, didn't make much... Any other business you want to talk about this time?
The administrative assistant. Get that out of the way. She has nothing to do with it.
Becky makes the call.
She has nothing.
You have nothing?
She is a fill-in at the last minute, our regressive became ill today.
That doesn't matter, she's good enough, she has...
I'll end this, not, there's no reason I...
I have one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
We keep asking for, sort of trying to get businesses and trying to lower the tax rate, and I think one of the things we have to do more than anything else is try to have everybody that possibly can patronize the businesses in town. And I think we're lucky to have the ones we have, and I sure would like to keep them and even get more. And I did come across one thing. When a new restaurant in West Warren was advertised originally in the newspaper, the newspaper published an incorrect date on it and so forth. It said that the business was closed on Sunday.
So it was closed?
Yeah, it was closed on Sunday. The business is not closed on Sunday, rather is closed on Monday. So, Neil, in the Aloud Block, we have Ma's Kitchen down there, and there's some other businesses. I think we try to, should try to patronize every business in town as much as we can. And just for the record, Ma's Kitchen is open six days a week, and the only day it's closed is Saturday. And as we said before, I think we've all tried it and said that it's a nice place to eat.
Monday.
Monday, I'm sorry, I'm going to get it wrong. Okay, it's open Monday, Tuesday, uh, sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. It is not open on Monday.
And Sunday's open.
Sunday is open absolutely.
It's only closed on Monday.
That's correct.
Right.
So we just want to make sure everybody realizes that, apparently some people...
We just like to see if we can confuse you.
Some people didn't know that it was open on Sunday, and just to repeat, the only day Ma's Kitchen is closed is on Monday. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Mailand, you'd like to talk to us?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to give you the floor, right now.
Thank you very much. My name is Kurt Mailand, I'm here with a, I'm a solar developer, I'm here with a group called Reservoir Road Holdings. I have my card here. I'm primarily here to introduce the board to a project that we're going to be working on in the next few months. And in particular, I'd like to start working on the, a similar type tax agreement that you did with the prior developers that were here. This particular project we're working on is located on Mike Starziak's property. He's got an old, I'm going to say an old, a gravel pit that was never gravelled at the end of Spring Street. We don't have a site plan yet, but I figured it was worth a visual, so I made like, I'm glad I made four. I just printed out four Google Earth maps in the rough area, but you can see it's a pretty, it's a cleared property, there's a lot of big sort of old boulders there, no homes. And we were going to do two small, I wouldn't call them small, but two 1-megawatt projects right next to each other. It's a perfect fit for the, for the distribution lines along that street. It squeezes into that substation that every other super-big developer in the area is hooking into, and we've done some preliminary work up there with Wetlands and Richie Demetrius dug some holes, and it looks good from every other perspective, so we're, it's very preliminary. You know, we're putting together our site plan right now to work with the planning board and the Conservation Commission, but wanted to make you aware of what we were up to before we got too far along. And the other thing that, you know, would be great to work on, and the only reason we need to do it now, or we'd love to do it now, is because your town meeting's coming up, is this tax agreement that we typically would wait on, but it's, I'm guessing your town meetings are once a year?
Well, we have, yeah, we have an annual meeting.
Annual meeting, yeah.
Second weekend, May, normally.
And I had been having a conversation with, you guys, I'm understanding you use Roy Bishop for your consultant with the...
Well, our assessor...
Your assessors use Roy?
They use Roy Bishop.
Well, I've used, I've worked with Roy on a number of projects. We, one of my clients is Salt House, which is doing a big project in Brinkfield, and I've talked with Roy on that, and I'm doing a project in Belcher Town. So Roy and I had a couple of brief conversations, and I guess he and I, with the approval of the assessors, are going to try to work out an agreement, and I'm going to be pretty easy on the pricing, and I'll do what, you know, pretty much he asks in terms of what the other developers did, even though we're technically getting less revenue. But, you know, I'd like to make it smooth, and I'd like to get it on the warrant if possible for the town meeting. I know I'm pushing, I know I'm pushing it, but it'd be great to have that in place, instead of having to wait a year. That's all. And obviously, we've got to go through the hoops of...
Well, I think we can accommodate you if your agenda is anywhere near reasonable.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I think Roy...
But David, we talked about establishing, did somebody negotiate this? We've had history with in the past, I don't know if you've had time to think that over, but...
Just for the record, please, put this in the record, Becky. While I am not in the butter, it is not that far, I live on Summer Street.
Okay.
Okay, so for the record, I live on Summer Street, I'm not in the butter, I'm not even sure if I'm in the butter or in the butter, but it would be close, so I just want that on the record. The only thing I have to say about this is, I think that in order for us to consider anything at this time, in my opinion, we would have to have something pretty, pretty down-to-earth and pretty, a solid copy of it, and come to some type of a conclusion as to what the payments and so forth will be before we have to be forward. But I would be in favor of getting to the town meeting.
Right, and I did talk to Roy about that, and he basically said he was going to work with the assessors, but he said, I would suggest, they've got a form in place that they've already vetted from the other guys, I think it's Borrego, I'm not sure who's in town.
Mm-hmm.
And he said, start with that, start with that number, be fair, and we'll see if we can get it done. So it's, my first answer was, that sounds fine.
Well, that was me, I think you have to come up with some kind of a proposal for the town.
Yep.
So we have something to look at.
Okay.
Concrete, and know what we can do with you, all right?
Sounds good, man.
We want to work with you.
Absolutely. I think my question would be, and I, you probably don't have an answer yet, but I'd just like to know, how many solar panels are we talking?
Uh, well, there'd be, I mean, right now in concept, there's, the program's changed, so Mike's got an interesting property, he's got two separate legal lots right next to each other, and we're going to do two 1-megawatt, I guess they're called community solar projects right next to each other, but we can do that because they're on two separate lots. I was originally drawn to the gravel pit, to be honest with you, we only do projects on gravel pits, landfills, and brownfields.
Mm-hmm.
Or at least I do. One megawatt project of, how many panels do a 1-megawatt project have? Three panels per kilowatt, about 3,000, 4,000 panels per megawatt, so about 6,000, 6,000 to 8,000 panels, roughly. Math isn't my strong suit.
I was wondering if you have another roll of the thumb, now, would you have an approximate acreage?
Yeah, it's about, I mean, without shading, it's about six acres a megawatt.
About six acres.
Yeah, I mean, that's a real rough, like today, I just, I've worked out at least a green one with Mike. And, you know, we did this a few months ago, we started the process with National Grids to make sure the lines were good, and we're pretty far aligned in that, and frankly, we just waited a little bit because of the snow. It's hard to get out there and see if the ground's wet and do the surveying when you have three feet of snow on the ground, so...
Okay. All right, you have anything?
No, I'm along the same thing, because I'd like to see a few more details.
Okay, I will get that to you.
Yeah, you put a plan together and let us know, but you're going to have to make a date with our planning board here, too.
Yep, we have to do a bunch of stuff with the planning board, we're going to get our engineers out here and do a proper site plan.
Any other questions, David?
Nope, I think that's all we really want, we just, we want to make sure that whatever we do, and I'm in favor of getting any businesses in town that we can, can help along, have them in here, but I'd just like to see some kind of a concrete plan.
Okay, and we probably, I mean, the site plan itself will probably come slightly after the concrete proposal for the taxes. Obviously, if the planning board were to say no or do something, it would have no effect on the tax plan, and we would just do a, typically do like a per-megawatt tax plan, and if they were to cut us down, then the agreement just adjusts, so... But I'll work with Roy and the assessors to get, to get you guys something, to get you all something concrete, as far as an offer goes.
Very good. As soon as you know anything, give the Selectman's office a call and let us know what you have, or fax it, or email it in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, what do we miss now?
Number eight.
Number eight, budget, that's got, and we have the budget.
One up to...
No.
Yeah, you can go to the table.
And I'll finance committee members' money.
Yeah.
That's you too, Dario.
Sue's got it under control, Frank.
Oh, yeah, this is the whole select board budget, we can do a little back and forth, but...
I was going to hold that back until...
Well, we can, I would want to hold the select board back.
No, that's, that's a discussion.
We have a couple of things, and I'm quite sure. Were you aware of this hydrant letter that we got from?
I was aware of the discussion, yes.
We should answer that.
Yes, I mean, that's $35 a hydrant, because their fee is the same as what's billed.
What are you talking about, the hydrants?
Yeah, we have to answer their letter.
Well, we have to answer that, that's all we're bringing to that.
It's $2.50, then we end up with, yeah, $2.85.
Something like that. We haven't got anything, we have got the money to do it now, we can, we'd have to do it at the special or wait until the annual.
Correct. Well, we would have to be at special because this is FY '14.
We're 1760 short for FY '14.
And how many, 7, 1,750 what?
1,760.
Why don't we answer back this way? But if we do this one, we got to have the West Warren hydrants also, if we keep both even.
That's been...
Why don't we do this, for right now? Answer back to the Warren Water District that at this stage, we are putting, we have an intent article for the special town meeting in May, we have no other way of getting the money right now, and that we will see what will happen at the special town meeting, and send the same letter, the same letter to the West Warren District, because we have to pay the same to both. We've always said we would do that.
And what's the, what's the reason for the increase?
They claim that they gave it to us back...
Well, no, I understand that, but why? What's the increase of $35 a hydrant?
Well, I think they're going to have to explain it, we could ask them to explain, at the same time you would send that letter, ask them to explain the reasoning behind your letter. I agree with that.
I mean, it's not like they do anything, they just sit there and be ready for when we need them. I know when was the last time we did a pressure test, I know that was an issue in the past. We had Fire Chief and Dave Johnson go around pressure testing them all, and some of them did pass, so...
So maybe, maybe we want to include in that, and Sue's got a valid point, maybe we want to include in that the result of any pressure tests in the last year.
Yeah, array of replacements, array of replacements, I, I don't know of any experienced worker that's done, I mean, new work.
Well, I mean, they've done some extensions, and, I mean, I agree, we need to pay for any new hydrant that's come on the line.
Right, well, we haven't had no notice of what they've done.
But, I mean, what's the increase for? I know the cost of doing business has gone up, but...
Mm-hmm. So we're going to hold on to the Selectman's budget, because we're going to have a working meeting to go over that.
Now, when is the working meeting?
Well, I'll let you know.
Okay.
It'll be on a Saturday, that's all I can tell you.
Okay.
We have the conservation one, that's level funded, I don't, I have no problem with that, so we can turn that over to finance. We have the town clerk, is level funded except. I have no problem with the budget in itself, which is also requesting an article that will be placed on the annual town meeting to increase the fees for vital record certificates, marriage licenses, business certificates, business certificate renewals, and telephone pole location filing. And basically, well, vital record certificates is from five to eight, marriage license from 15 to 25, business certificates from 10 to 20, business certificates renewed from five to 10, and telephone location filings from 10 to 20. Is, again, what we should probably do on that, I'm not going to say yes or no to it, but we can just inform the clerk that we will put a intent article on right now, no, intent article strictly means we're going to talk about it again.
Yeah, well, I mean, what she told us when she came in to meet with us was that the fees have not increased since Bev Russell, her predecessor, was, was in charge, and she called around to various towns to see what they charged, and she was still under some of those towns.
Even with the increases?
Yes.
Now, let me ask this question, you probably don't get it, are these fees something she keeps or something she turns to the town?
Well, that was a question I had, because I know part of her salary is fees, so she keeps them. She keeps them, yes.
Well, let's double check, remember, we're now over a certain amount of population and to change what the tax Select can do?
But that does not apply to town clerk.
Was that, was that...
Okay, so the idea is that...
That doesn't apply to the clerk's office.
This is going to be kept by...
The clerk.
Okay. Let's put the intent article on and go from there.
All right.
Now, assessor's budget.
If you look down at the bottom, there's a total of $100,251.
Mm-hmm.
That's all of that, those figures up top, added together, using the salaries, the revow.
$1,800 for website.
Well, that's, yeah, additional from what they put in.
At $3,800 is what they, what they put in, apparently it should be $5,600, and the total budget would be $100,000, $10.52, and there'd be another increase, well, where did they put the, now the...
The mapping is, they just put all the maps on the website, you go onto their section, you can find all your town maps and field cards. So to maintain that as part of the website listing is the $1,800 additional fee, which when they turned in their budget, they had forgotten to submit, that's why they had level funded it, but then changed it to $5,600.
The only problem I have with it, I don't, I understand, and I talked to Lorena today, my information I have is, is that they have already spent the money.
Well, there's an $1,800 shortfall for FY '14.
Mm-hmm.
So for FY '15, these are the correct, $5,600 is the corrected figure. There was an oversight in the assessor's office when they forgot the $1,800.
I understand.
So that's a whole separate issue.
I understand all that for next year.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand that, that's not a problem, that's a problem with it. I guess my question is this, I was informed today that they have deficit spent already for this year, they don't, they can't do that.
I don't think they're in the deficit yet.
Here's the information I received, the information I received was...
They're short $1,800, they're going to be short.
Well, short, but, they're short, but they're short, but they have two bills they haven't turned in yet.
Correct.
Which means they deficit spent.
It'll be three and a half months late without that $1,800.
So I guess the question is, how can we do that? I don't know if the, I don't know if the finance committee can give them any money, because it's been spent when they didn't have the money in the budget. And the only way anybody can deficit spend is in case of an emergency. We deficit spend in the highway, but we don't usually deficit spend anyplace else.
There's snow and ice, snow and ice in overtime for someone else.
So I don't know if we can do anything about this this year. So I guess my question, Becky, and I hate to do this, do you?
Do a Madeline question.
Do a Madeline question or a town council question, because it's illegal to deficit spend. And I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I know they didn't do it on purpose or anything like that, but my question is, can we take care of it now or not, or do we have to wait until the main, a special town meeting? I don't know the answer.
And if we can, can we put an article on the special for the team?
I think I'll put an article on the special, and it would be, it wouldn't be a previous year's bill. But the problem becomes is if they've already spent it, the people that they spent this for are gonna wait. Are they gonna wait for another two or three months? That's the question. Can anything be done out of the money we have, such as reserve fund? Or can that not be done because of the fact that it was...
It's not oversold.
It wasn't appropriated, and it was spent when they didn't have the money. And I'm not saying they shouldn't have done it, I just don't know the answer. I don't need a question.
Okay, follow-up tomorrow.
And answer the rest of it. I think we just should turn that one over to the, to the finance committee, and just kind of have the finance committee get back to us and...
Ask for the rest of what?
For the budget for next year.
Yeah.
Okay. It's an increase, I understand why. I think that just have the finance committee get back to us and see what they have to say about it.
Yeah, I mean, their biggest increase, it's a full revalue.
Right, that we knew about.
Additional fourteen.
That we knew about, the fifteen thousand, or whatever it is, we knew about.
And then there's step increases.
Right, we step increases, we can't, that has to happen. That's a town, town voted to do that. And we will get, Bob, I'm sure Bob will get to you as soon as we decide when that working meeting's going to be.
Right.
That's all the budgets?
That's all the budgets we have.
I can.
Okay.
So you're approving, just to recap, David?
Yep.
You're approving level funding for the Conservation Commission, level funding for the town clerk, and then put the article, intent article for the increase in the fees.
Yep.
I'm gonna send a letter to the Warren Water District.
With intent article there.
Yeah, and an intent article, and we're gonna wait for feedback from the FinCon on the assessors for FY fifteen.
Yep.
And then I'll follow up tomorrow with Madeline regarding the eighteen hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And we'll give you any other to command.
The chairman, just out of curiosity, I thought anybody that had deficit spent had to go through to the board first.
They do.
I do.
That's the question.
Well, that's the answer, they didn't.
Well, the answer, and I agree with you, they didn't. Number one, they can't deficit spend, so it now becomes...
Yeah, no one missed a deficit.
And whether they deficit spent, whether they, whether they actually spent the money or holding bills, okay? It's the same thing. And I'm not trying to hang anybody or anything like that, I just, I don't know what we can do about it.
It's a precedent.
So, and no matter what happens, I think the letter has to be sent to the Board of Assessors, but I want to wait, just strictly stating that if you miss something, you gotta, the easy solution to this would have been, go to FinCon and get the money from FinCon before it was spent. That was an easy one. So we will have to send something to the point where, if you knowingly know you don't have enough money in a, in an article or enough money in your budget, you've got to go to FinCon before you spend it, because it becomes a deficit, and we can't. And in certain conditions, the only way the board can, can let people deficit spend. And it's usually public safety type of things, it's not to get maps.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we've covered everything tonight, haven't we? Except other business? Do you have any?
No, I don't.
Bob, you don't have any?
No, I already did mine.
Okay, I have one. I'd like to announce that the Rabies Clinic is this Saturday. It's ten to twelve, ten AM to twelve PM.
Nine to eleven. Nine to eleven, fourteen dollars at the Highway Barn, and Nancy will be there, so that you can license your dog at the same time. I just talked to her this morning.
Yeah, I checked on that, how do you get that information?
I talked to Nancy.
Did you?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for correcting me, I appreciate it. All right, well, anyway, it's this Saturday. So all you folks out there, the town clerk will be there for licensing, plus the Board of Health will be there with the vetting iron with the rabies. All right? So this is, that's a good sign of spring, a good sign of spring. Anything else?
Nope, just next meeting date.
The next meeting date, we're back on a solid schedule. So the eighteenth, seven o'clock, twenty-fifth, seven o'clock. And we have to work, I have a work meeting I have to work out, I'll notify everybody about that. All right, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
I got a motion, second, in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Cameras off, please. Will you turn your camera off, sir?